Good afternoon and welcome to the October meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm Chairman of the Board Greg Musil. I wanted to explain first of all that we are all participating by Zoom today. It takes a significant team of people, both from our IS and AV and television production crew to put this on. And we had somebody go home sick yesterday, so we decided that in, but both to meet our obligations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act and to follow the prudent practices of the policies that we have on campus for potential COVID-19 exposure, that we would move this to Zoom as we did before our July meeting. So we are all on Zoom today and I will ask you to join me at your place as I recite the Pledge of Allegiance as we do with each of our meetings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with just liberty and justice for all. I've always feared forgetting that in a regular meeting, it's even worse when you're on Zoom and you're the only one doing it. Thank you. We are, we are meeting on Zoom. I've asked in an email earlier this week for trustees, as we participate in this public meeting, to, to the extent possible, keep your cameras on so the public can see who's participating and so we can keep it clear in the minutes. Obviously, if you have to step away as you would in a regular meeting, we can note that. If you do have technical difficulties, let Terry Schliss know so that we can kind of keep track of who's on and participating in the meeting at various times. Again, for meetings, Open Meetings Act purposes. Let's see, we do have a quorum. We have all seven trustees are present on the Zoom. And the first item on the agenda after that is awards and recognition. I don't have any on my list. Is that correct, Dr. Bound? Okay. The next item is the open forum section. The open forum section is a period in each regularly scheduled board meeting where members of the public can make comment on any items they choose. If it is usually allowed at five minutes per speaker unless there's a greater number of speakers, in which case the chair has a discretion to reduce it to three minutes. When addressing the board, registered speakers are expected to be respectful and civil. When we're live, to stay at the podium. When we're Zoom, to stay within their, within their time limit. And as a practice, the college does not respond to items during the open forum session that are under review elsewhere or focus on student or other confidential personnel matters. For today, we have nobody who registered online yesterday by the five o'clock deadline. So there are no open forum speakers today. That leads us to the Student Senate Report. And I think we have Student Senate President Sailor Usher available to update us on what the Student Senate is doing in these unique times. Sailor, are you there?
Yeah, hi. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
Okay, so just to talk through a couple of things. We were actually the interim exec board also. So Sam Riddles, my Vice President. I'm Joseph Sailor Usher, I'm the President for this year. And we have Tanisi, who is our parliamentarian this year. We can talk about some of the projects that we worked on over the summer though. Tanisi and I worked on a handbook and so that was fun to get to flex some of the graphic design skills. And then we all had the opportunity to present at the Student Life Club and Org Retreat at their involvement fair. We got to tell students what the Student Senate is about and try to get people involved in a running for Student Senate. And then we held elections online, which was kind of different, but it actually turned out to be easier. And we've got some senators who are all figured out on their committees now and we're working on some projects. So our plans for the semester are twofold. There's one area that kind of everybody was talking about of trying to find ideas for clubs to request for funding. Because we have money to fund clubs and we've only had, we did have one request from the Model United Nations. And so we gave them some money to do some catering for a conference they went to. They went to campus and attended it in the collab. And we're trying to get ideas like that, care packages, and then we're going to request, or we're going to suggest those to all the club leaders to get people doing more stuff. And then the second part of the plan is to find out what all of the club leaders are interested in. And then when they're interested in doing the same kinds of things, we'll match them up so we can collaborate. We've merged our PR committee and our service and fundraising committees into one committee because now all of our service fundraising is online. And we're preparing now for JCCC Gives. We're gathering nominations for students and we have over a dozen now. That's where we raise money to give people gifts in the holiday season. And on November 2nd, our donation page will go live on JCCC Gives. But yeah, thanks for my time. That's, that's all we're up to right now. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your leadership in really unusual times and the creativity that everybody has to show today. Are there any specific questions for Sailor from any of the trustees? You can use the, probably use the chat because I'm not sure I, let me do the gallery view. I can see if you raise your hands, okay. Laura.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say welcome and thank you and congratulations on your first presentation to the board, even though it was in a little box on Zoom.
All right, thank you Sailor.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next, our next board report is from our college lobbyist Dick Carter in front of his United States flag in Topeka. Dick, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is a 34-star flag recognizing the entrance of Kansas into the, into the Union. We are in full-on election mode right now and candidates are working door-to-door, they're working phones. It just depends on what area of the state you live in. You'll see quite a few signs on the medians, on the corners and in yards. And it is full-on election mode until November 3rd right now. And so even though there's a couple of committees that have been meeting in Topeka, very little in the way of productivity in interim meetings. Even though the state ended up $108 million ahead of projections for the first quarter of fiscal year '21, we still face that predicted $1.4 billion shortfall by the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, 2021. And I just want to remember a couple of things to watch. Much of that increase is due to the delayed income tax filing deadline of July 15th, which already moved into the current fiscal year. It's unclear what impact the CARES and Spark monies may have on the state budget and the shortfall. And then the Consensus Revenue Estimating Group will meet on November 2nd to review the Kansas financial outlook and provide any revisions if necessary. Speaking of Spark, I mentioned that just a moment ago. That's strengthening people and revitalizing Kansas. That's the program designed to distribute dollars to, to assist with some of the COVID-related expenses that have been going on throughout the state since, since spring. There have been three rounds of distribution so far. Round one was $400 million, fairly broadly based. Round two was $314 million focused on business recovery education. Round three was $290 million focusing on testing and childcare expenses. The challenges are receiving and spending the monies by December 31 of this year. Senators Moran and Roberts introduced a bill to extend that 1231 deadline. It didn't look like it was going anywhere initially, but it may be factored into the next round of stimulus that's currently being negotiated in Washington DC. We know that we'll be revisiting a list of tax issues contained in bills from the last two sessions. Most importantly for JCCC, that means we'll be monitoring and remaining critically aware of any property tax reform. We're unsure exactly what that might look like, but as you know, we remain vigilant for any change that could impact or affect commercial property tax collections. And certainly we have some of those issues that are up for review in the Board of Tax Appeals. And so we remain constantly aware of what any change in the legislative arena would look like. We also know that there'll be some forthcoming recommendations for a couple of other committees that have been meeting. The Special Committee on Economic Recovery as well as the Special Committee on Emergency Management Act. Both of those committees, as they continue to meet, are formulating their recommendations for the 2021 legislative session. Some of those are going to be pretty interesting. A lot of regulations have been waived during the COVID period. Under the Emergency Management Act, it will be interesting to see what some of the, the bills that come out of those two committees look like when January and February roll around as far as maybe making some of those types of, removing some of those regulatory environments permanently. We'll see what happens. We ought to know more later on in November and December. I just alluded to some possible issues that we'll be seeing in the 2021 session. But in November, I'll provide a better glimpse of what some of the big-ticket items look to be as, as we get ready for the legislature to convene in January in Topeka. In December, we'll take a look at the impact of the leadership elections and how that will play out for the next session, the next couple of sessions for that matter. And that will, that will have to do a lot too with redistricting, which will be a big issue that will get introduced next year, but really will be handled in the 2022 session as far as any approval is concerned for new legislative districts and redistricting. And then finally, we hosted two sets of candidate meetings via Zoom on behalf of the college where Dr. Bound had the opportunity to just give some information about the college. And I won't go into any detail because I think that he'll, he'll probably want to provide some additional updates or, or information regarding those. But it was, it was good that we had about 20 people participate over a two-day period. We've never done that before. I think it went exceedingly well. And I was pleased with the conversation and the dialogue that, that occurred between those running for office and asking questions about the college after, after having had the opportunity to learn a little bit about it. So I would stop there. And Dr. Bound, I don't know if you want to talk about that now or maybe later in your report, but I would be happy to answer any questions if I'm able.
Dr. Bound, do you want to cover that later or now?
I can just real briefly, I didn't have a lot to add to that. But again, between yesterday and today, we held the two sessions. One with candidates running on the Democrat, Democratic ticket and, and a group of Republicans today. So yesterday the Democrats, today the Republicans. Really an overview of the college, the sorts of things that you'd want current and future leaders to know, whether they're elected or not. Obviously, they're all seeking to be elected. But even if they're not elected, we've informed them even more about the work that we do here at Johnson County Community College. So we did an overview, frankly, the parts of it looked similar to what I do when I'm out in the community, providing an overview, number of students, number of graduates, number of career certificates and so forth, the breadth of programming that we offer and so forth. Talked a little bit about how we're moving forward this year, realizing this is the strategic planning year. So in the strategic plan work, in our work around enrollment, in our work around DEI, our economic development and workforce development activities. And then the reality that we're 80/20 in terms of online to face-to-face courses. And then we talked about three different particular legislative items. Maybe awareness items more than anything. The first being understanding the, the state oversight, the relationship of K-BOR to the board of regents, universities, region universities, and the difference between their governance there and coordinating role with the community colleges. And making sure that they understand that. And also making sure that they understand and know who, if they don't already know who Dick is, as well as Heather Morgan, who's the Executive Director of KACCt, and our own Kate Allen. Talked to them about our funding streams and understanding we're about 66% local property tax funded, 20% tuition and 14%, 15% state funding. I referenced like very quickly the dark store theory and potential impact if, if, if things were to carry out there from a revenue standpoint related to local property tax. Talked about, you know, the reality of discussions ongoing from time to time about a statewide mill levy. And then talked about enrollment. And then really turned it over to them and let them ask questions. We'll be getting to you trustees, kind of a synopsis of here's what was covered. Here were the questions that were asked as well as who attended. So you can see that, so when you're interacting with folks around the community, these are all folks you know and know well. We thought it would be important for you, as I said right up front, we'll get you this information. So I would expect either from Kate or me tomorrow or over the weekend, at the very latest, you'll get the summary. So that, to build on what Dick shared.
All right, thank you. Questions for Dick or Dr. Bound on that subject? There are other questions for Dr. Bound, let's save them for the President's report. But if it relates to that, we can take them now. I'm looking for hands to raise up if anybody has any questions. Trustee Cross?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I spoke with Dr. Bound yesterday in our scheduled meeting and I don't think that he knows, but I just wanted to ask Mr. Carter, do we know if the governor is going to extend the orders that are in place on, I think it's November 15th?
Yeah, so the emergency management orders expire every 30 days. There was no questioning of this particular, this last round of extension. I would believe that there will be another attempt to extend those either through the end of the year. I think they can only do them 30 days at a time. So it'd be through December 15th and then they'll have to do another one until the legislature arrives. I do think that there will be an attempt or an effort to extend those. That's how we access the federal support, the federal dollars. And, and I know that recently, I think the press conference was yesterday or the day before, the governor had mentioned wanting to look at the issue again of a mask order. I don't know if that will appear in, in the language of the next emergency management order or if that'll be a separate issue handled. I know she's currently meeting with legislative leadership on, on that particular issue.
Thank you.
Trustee Smith Everett.
I just wanted to applaud Dr. Bound and Dick for the forum with candidates. I, you know, being the newbie in this position, find oftentimes I'm explaining the college to people in elected positions, which is kind of scary. So I appreciate that, that you all are being very proactive with that and, and making sure that all candidates know about us and understand and understand, especially this legislative year, our funding, which, which may be coming into question. I would like to advocate as a two-time candidate that perhaps offering it a little further out from Election Day might, I don't know what the attendance was, but might help more people attend. Two weeks out from the Election Day is critical GOTV time. So thanks so much. That's the conclusion of my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Good idea, good idea. Anybody else?
Greg, I'll head back on Trustee Smith Everett's comments too. Because, you know, just like you explained, this is something that I had never heard that we had done. I think it's very appropriate to do. But I think it just begins those establishing relationships, whether these folks are elected or not. They have an interest in our community. They have an interest in what's going on. So I agree with Trustee Smith Everett. I think it was really a wise thing to do and applaud you guys as well. So thank you very much.
Well, for the benefit of the public, we've done legislative breakfasts, as the trustees know in the past, where we've invited small groups in to, to meet with the President, Kate, Dick, and they got to three trustees at a time for breakfast or lunch. The attendance at that seemed to be dwindling and we seemed, I think we got more attention and a little more interest while they're in the election season. So it's good timing and we moved it a little earlier, maybe that will be even better than 20. So I, I thank Andy, Dick and Kate for organizing that and thinking about that this year. I see no other questions for Dick. Mr. Carter, thank you.
Thank you.
To the Faculty Association report, Dr. Leicher. Come on down.
Good evening.
Hi Jim.
So I'll start with a couple of bragging points concerning recent academic accomplishments. A few weeks ago, I was privileged to receive a video from Catherine Grubie, Professor of Interior Design, highlighting the work done by her students in the IDSA, the Interior Design Student Association. Normally, IDSA officers would visit classrooms to promote membership, but this year they went virtual. And so with the help of Barrett Beasley, the Director of Video Services, they produced a wonderful 17-minute recruitment project, which is accessible through our YouTube channel that I encourage you to check out. Other student organizations can point to something similar. I offered this one as an illustration of how we're adapting to circumstances just like everybody else. And Shudong Chen, Professor of Humanities, announced that his most recent book, Four Quartets in the Light of the Chinese Jar, will be available in December. Shudong and I go way back almost 30 years to when we taught Western Civilization at KU. Faculty who teach the great books, classes, especially those who've attended East Asian Studies programs at the University of Hawaii, know the challenge of developing humanities-based material in ways that bridge East and West. And Shudong has always been a successful example of that, both in teaching and scholarship. I think work like his will be important as the world becomes a smaller place. So the Faculty Association met two weeks ago and there are a few items I'd like to share. The first concerned an idea currently under discussion in the Calendar Committee to extend the length of our winterum session to seven weeks. For the last several years, we've offered a three-week opportunity between the fall and spring semesters called Winterum for students to complete coursework. Personally, I've been too timid and too fond of not working Christmas and New Year to ever try it. But faculty in my department who have say the pace is grueling. You're trying to squeeze 15 weeks of curriculum into one-fifth of the time and during holidays to boot. Under the arrangement being considered, Winterum would extend to seven weeks, similar to our summer offerings. And while it wouldn't replace the 15-week system we just implemented, it would delay the start of spring semester, eliminate spring break and open the door for students to complete degrees and certificates through a series of six, seven-week sessions per year. In a time of enrollment decline and pressure to open pathways to faster completion, it's an idea that merits discussion. Now, to no one's surprise, my colleagues are expressing an array of opinions. Despite cautious optimism on the part of a few, no one has yet endorsed this enthusiastically and they won't until certain questions can be answered. For instance, would flexible scheduling be part of this? Would faculty be allowed to teach through winter or summer if they wish, but take off in September and October? Strong objections have been raised by science about the feasibility of scheduling labs in 15 and seven-week sessions simultaneously. Some of us being notorious libertarians who despise centralized control, wonder if departments and divisions will have the same authority they've always had to say no to this? Or are we setting up a precedent where we'll be required to rush students through an accelerated track? For myself, I've always seen higher education as a life-transforming experience, something that requires time for reflection. Would this simply be setting students up to fail out of a need to boost numbers? There is data from other institutions who've adopted this model indicating that's not necessarily the case. Finally, there are some questions concerning financial aid eligibility. And what would K-BOR think if we go off and do our own thing while other schools are trying to get spring break and other pieces of the calendar in sync statewide? So I guess in short, there are no simple answers here, which is why, if this proceeds to the next level, I anticipate a long campus-wide conversation that will eventually come to you, the board, and from there, back to myself and the Faculty Association. A change of that kind would impact workload and therefore requires negotiation. A second item on the plate lately has been faculty responsibility and communicable disease reporting. Under the current system, professors, even if they teach online, are expected to adhere to reporting protocols when they learn a student has had COVID symptoms or if they've been exposed to someone who tested positive or traveled to a high-risk area. The problem has not been so much in the reporting, but in the expectation that faculty gather students' private medical information as a means of follow-up. My colleagues are pointing out, and I agree, that most of us not being medical care providers are not trained for that kind of thing. Many colleges and universities have already removed faculty from the process in order to protect privacy and minimize the legal risk that comes from asking those kinds of probing questions. There is also a workload issue in that some professors are spending six to eight hours a week in tracking cases, which is clearly a distraction from their teaching duties. Now, to be clear, we know everybody's doing their part and we want to do ours for the greater good. Our reps on the Return to Campus Task Force, particularly Michelle Riley, and I have had some enlightening conversations about this, both with KNEA and administration. I was informed today that a new plan is being worked out internally, which will remove faculty from the information gathering process. I think when all is said and done, we're going to see this as one of our better moments for collaboration. Better because speaking frankly, we got the right people in the room when decisions were made. The pandemic is evolving. We all know that. And so our responses have to as well. As we reevaluate, I can't emphasize enough that the main priority of the people I speak for is quality instruction, of which teaching is just one component. Every add-on expectation runs the risk of diminishing that quality. I'm sure you'll agree that's something we want to avoid. Moving on, FA leadership met with Collegial Steering recently, which I believe Mr. Musil will address later. The College Council is moving forward. One question we'll be addressing soon is the selection of both an adjunct representative and an at-large faculty member for that body. This would normally be the time when department chairs prepare the schedule for Fall 2021. Whether that will be mostly online again is a decision we're waiting to hear. Just a heads up from my point of view, as difficult as the transition to virtual has been, I think we'll be in for a rockier ride on the transition back, whenever that is. Finally, to wrap up what happened at our FA meeting, the members voted to donate $3,000 to some enchanted opportunity to be designated for student basic needs. While we'll miss the black tie affair of some enchanted evening, most of my colleagues probably won't, but I will. I rather like the Scotch bar. We are pleased to contribute an unprecedented amount for an unprecedented year. And that concludes my report.
Why don't I unmute so Laura's not making hand signals at me? Thank you, Trustee Smith Everett. Questions for Dr. Leicher? Not at this time, I guess, Jim. Thank you very much. And for being flexible as we change back to Zoom. The next item on the report will be from the Johnson County Education Research Triangle, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually meet next week. I don't really have any updates to offer. I'll have more next month.
Thank you. Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, what we refer to as KACCt. Trustee Ingram is our liaison and the President of that statewide organization.
Yes, thank you, Chair Musil. I do want to start off just by recognizing the recent ACCT Leadership Congress, which was held the first week of October. I had some other trustees who were participating in those rams. So I hope they've had a chance to take a look at those, the ones that I participated in. I thought were really, really good this year. So I hope they've had a chance to take a look at those, the ones that I participated in, I thought were really, really good this year. I did attend the regional caucuses, which were held on September 30th and October 1st. And the Senate meeting, which also convened on October 1st as the voting member. Just wanted to remind everyone, you should have received information from ACCt. We do have a Western Regional Director, a new one, Rose Benefitis. She is from South Texas College in Texas. And we have three at-large directors, Amanda Holland from the College of Lake County, Illinois, and at-large Director John Lucas from Lakeshore Technical College in Wisconsin. And Gilbert Wong is our third at-large Director from Foothill De Anza, Community College District in California. So typically at the Leadership Congress, there would be actual campaigning going on. You would have the opportunity to get to visit one-on-one with some of these folks, but a little bit different this year, we had about 150 people on a Zoom call, which was interesting and crazy in and of itself. Lots of people coming in and going off. We talk about muting and unmuting. It was just really funny, if you will. But anyway, we did get those folks elected and we look forward to their leadership in ACCt. As far as KACCt, we have our next meeting coming up. The quarterly meeting will be on Saturday, December 5th. It will be Zoom once again. The officers will be meeting, we have our monthly call this Monday evening, so we will be discussing the agenda at that time. We don't have that ready for you to announce this evening. I think as important as anything, I continue to report every month that the presidents have a call on Fridays. And it's about an hour-long call and it just continues to really revolve around COVID and the pandemic and how things are affecting our individual institutions. But those remain extremely important and everyone seems to always be on those calls. There's always a representative, the executive officers have continued to participate in those calls as well. We just find it important to listen and hear about what's going on. It gives us a better statewide perspective as the officers, so we really appreciate that opportunity. I was not on this past Friday call, but I do know that, just like we were talking about earlier, as far as meeting with the legislators, we talked about, Greg talked about the legislative meetings that we used to have. And it's going to be important to really broaden those relationships this year, funding the pandemic. You know, it's, it's just going to be, once we begin to move away from the pandemic, it's going to be really important to have really good, solid relationships with those folks that, that do provide leadership and represent us in Topeka. So as much as possible, we do want to have in-person meetings when it is possible to do so. Statewide testing strategies was a part of the phone call on Friday as well. Dr. Bowden, you may want to elaborate that on that in a few minutes as well. And I know that there was a report about the K-BOR meeting that was just recently held by Dennis Riddle, who is the president of the President's Organizations. Organization and he is from Cali County. So the importance of those calls continues. I will continue to update that as we meet on a monthly basis as a board. But again, our next meeting is not until December 5th. I would elaborate just a little bit further. I'm not sure that, I heard Dick Carter mention the future of Higher Education Council. Did you say something about that, Dick?
I think it's in my written report.
Right, okay, but I didn't.
I didn't mention it, no.
Okay. Anyway, we met on September the 22nd. We had four topics that were discussed. We talked about math pathways, administrative functions, affiliation and mergers and facilities. There was quite a bit of discussion about the math pathways and the fact that we might have to take a look at, you know, the difference between some degrees needing statistics, some needing algebra, maybe not everyone needing algebra, and a discussion about how that could move forward, perhaps even legislatively. But there was a lot of interest in moving that forward with K-BOR to discuss the administrative functions. They, there is this sense that there is a greater opportunity to look at collaboration amongst the community colleges. That seems to be where a lot of the emphasis is. That's not something that we are supporting, of course. And again, this will come up in our discussion on Monday evening when we have the chance for the executive officers to talk about how we want to move forward with those conversations. But they really want to develop a list of non-student-facing departments such as HR and see if there's something where community colleges could collaborate. Again, that's something that we support. We've made that really clear. But we will be putting together our statement about that as we move forward. The, the facilities piece, I think, was kind of interesting and that seems to be something that Blake Flanders is really interested in, particularly with the move toward a lot of online classes. He is very interested in the maintenance of the buildings on our campuses. And you have to realize too that, you know, we, K-BOR, it does not govern us. The trustees govern ourselves. So they're giving a lot of input regarding community colleges. And so there's, there's, I'm starting to get a little more curious as to how this is going, but I would just reassure you that we have Dick Carter on the line, Kate Allen is usually on the line when those meetings occur, as well as Heather Morgan from KACCt. So there's a lot of support for us. We have another trustee from Dodge County Community College who is also in the room. So, you know, we'll, we'll be looking at the next four topics that they will. I don't have the agenda for next week's meeting yet, but we will have several other topics that we'll be talking about. And then how those recommendations, if there are recommendations that will go forward to K-BOR, what ultimately will occur with those. But it's been a lot of information gathering at this point. I don't really want to alarm anyone. But I'm, but I'm, I'm following it very closely, as is everyone that I have just mentioned. So that is my report and concernly, you know, address any questions that you might have, but I'll just admit there.
Questions for trustee Ingram? Dr. Bowden?
Not a question, but maybe to build on that. Just so you know, as trustees, I have found the KACCt Presidents and Heather Morgan to be incredibly helpful to me as a new president here in getting to understand the landscape and understand how do we work together? Where do we have the opportunities in understanding where are they at from, you know, I mean, simple things like, what are you looking at when you look at the decisions around what's offered online versus face-to-face in this environment that we're in, being able to have those open conversations? And so that has been incredibly helpful to me. Heather Morgan is a go-to person for me. Certainly the connection to K-BOR is important and Blake Flanders can be as well. But I've, it's been important for me to develop a closer and closer relationship with Heather as she is the one who's also working with our 18 colleagues around the state. So, and then finally, I can say that having a trustee from our board involved in this process and working with us in a statewide capacity and the amount of information that's fed back to us in meetings that we're not in. We're not in the future of higher ed meetings. But that flow of information back and forth and being kept in tune to what's going on there has been incredibly helpful to us. And Nancy, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that additional information, Dr. Bowden. You can understand K-BOR's interest in facilities and maintenance, given the status of our seven Regents Universities and probably some of our community colleges in deferred maintenance. I think it's a tribute that we don't really have those issues here. I think we're also glad we don't have a football team or on-campus housing, right, Dr. Bowden? Okay. Thank you. Trustee Ingram, go on to the Foundation Report, please.
Sure, I'd be happy to. The Foundation held its Fall Meeting of Directors on September 30th via Zoom. The Foundation Board President, Sue Parker, welcomed three new directors and gave the board an overview of multiple recent Foundation accomplishments. We also heard updates from Dr. Bowden, Faculty Association President James Leicher and Student Senate President Sailor Usher. I also provided an update as the trustee liaison. The Foundation's Executive Committee will meet next Tuesday, October 27th via Zoom, and the Foundation's Investment Committee will meet on November 10th. Beyond Bounds 2020 envisioned, the highly anticipated art auction benefiting the Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art, was reimagined this year and has been held exclusively online. 184 artists contributed more than 190 beautiful works and online bidding began in late September. More than 250 people have registered to participate in online bidding at this time. The online auction will close this Saturday, October 24th at 7:00 PM. I'd like to especially thank the many sponsors who have continued their support of this transformed event. Thanks to these generous sponsors, if bidding were to stop today, this event will have raised more than $250,000 to benefit the museum's educational programming and acquisitions. I encourage everyone to register to bid and view available art by visiting I'd also like to take a quick moment to thank the Nerman Museum team, as well as our Foundation team. As you can imagine, it has taken tremendous teamwork and collaboration to execute this event this year. And I'd like to recognize those two teams for their efforts. The Foundation's Some Enchanted Opportunity Campaign benefiting student scholarships and student basic needs continues to also be very successful. More than $500,000 has already been raised with more than two months left in the campaign. I know many of my fellow trustees have made contributions to this campaign, so I'd like to personally thank you for your support. We have been truly humbled by our community's generosity and willingness to support our students during these challenging times, even if this year's weren't, we weren't able to hold our typical in-person gala. I continue to encourage everyone to learn more about the campaign by the website. When you visit the campaign webpage, you'll have an opportunity to see how we are recognizing our 2020 Johnson Countyans of the Year, our essential workers. You'll be able to gain inspiration by seeing how your support makes a positive impact on our students' lives. And you'll find a variety of ways you can personally participate in the campaign. And that includes, concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Ingram. Questions about the Foundation? It'll seem, let's move on. Well, we did not put on the agenda. I'm glad Jim Leicher mentioned it. We did have a Collegial Steering Meeting the first Tuesday in October. I don't remember the date. And since it wasn't on the agenda, I forgot to actually put any notes together on it. But we had a, the same, the same group that we've had in the past, except for nobody from the Faculty Senate, Vice Chair and Vice Chair, President and Vice President. The Collegial Steering consists of the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board, representatives of the administration. I think in that case, it was Dr. Bowden and Dr. Weber and Dr. McLeod, the President and Vice President of the Faculty Association Union, Jim Leicher, and Diane, I forget last names, I apologize. And also the Chair and Vice Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee, which handles the economic or the academic curriculum structure for the college. A lot of the discussion surrounded the role and function of the Collegial Steering Committee, given the shared governance structure that was created out of the grassroots effort that Jim and Sheri did over a year time. And with the founding and the composition of the Academic Branch Council, the Staff Council and the College Council, there will be a determination in the future as to how we continue to ensure that there are those lines of communications between the various key constituencies on campus. So we'll meet again in November and the charge was to come back with kind of an explanation of the role and the benefits of Collegial Steering as it has been constituted in the past, so we can consider how it should be incorporated or constituted in the future. And with that, we'll move on to the committee reports. First is Human Resources, trustee Ingram.
Yes, Human Resources Committee met on Friday, October the 2nd. Becky Sintliver, Vice President of Human Resources, gave an update on the HR audit. This audit will provide an operational assessment of JCCC's human resources function. This review will focus on operational effectiveness and identification of process improvements and optimizing services to the campus community. Jerry Zimmerman, Manager of Benefits, gave an update on the Paid Holiday Task Force. I do want to mention the folks who are on that task force includes Ty Edwards, Valerie Jones, Jim Lane, Robbie Miller, Crystal Stokes, Hannah Turinett and Jerry Zimmerman. And those people have met several times. Looks like they had their first meeting on Tuesday, September 1st with the objective of investigating paid holidays in general in consideration of adding Juneteenth. They then had a subsequent meeting and reviewed and shared the input that they had received associated with the objectives that they have mentioned. They conducted a virtual college-wide town hall meeting on September the 22nd to solicit input from greater JCCC, the greater JCCC employee community. They are in the process of soliciting responses to a campus-wide survey that was sent out by institutional research to all JCCC employees and that will close on October the 26th. Questions include specifically asking whether it should be a holiday at JCCC and ask participants to rank their preference for a paid holiday associated with such items as professional development and community service. So the committee will review all pertinent information and hopes to make a recommendation back to the December HR meeting. In addition, Colleen Chandler, Director of Human Resources, gave an overview regarding an applicant tracking and onboard system. Implementation began in July of 2019 and is now live while updating for positions posted in the previous system. The new system has improved the applicant experience as well as the internal user experience. Additional modules with page up may be utilized in the future. She also reviewed the exit interviews for employees who separated in calendar year 20 of the second quarter. And she gave a review of the annual evaluation process. Employees evaluate their supervisors through a link to a survey from HR. Results are compiled into individual reports for each supervisor with a minimum of three direct reports. The supervisor supervisor receives a report for input in the evaluation. She also provided a review of the annual performance evaluation process for non-faculty staff. Annual performance reviews are conducted each calendar year based on established performance goals and expectations. The next Human Resources Committee is scheduled for Friday, December 4th, and that concludes my report.
Questions for trustee Ingram on the HR report. Trustee Smith Everett?
Thank you. Nancy, I don't know if you could speak to this, or maybe Becky could, but I just wondered if somebody could give me a brief, or give us a brief synopsis of how it improves the process for applicants? What, what particular things made this a benefit to start using?
Becky, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. I will say it's a lot more intuitive and it's user-friendly. The system that we had previously was kind of cumbersome and many times applicants would have to call in and our staff would have to walk them through how to apply. This is just very much more intuitive for people and people just can log in and they can save their locations. And so it's just a lot more friendly for applicants.
A follow-up to that, I went through the application process as a former employee with the college. And one of the things I know the old system didn't do was allow an applicant to go back and apply for new jobs without having to fill out a brand-new application, provide all the new paperwork, which is a real obstacle for people to, and encouragement for them to reapply for different positions. I wondered if the new system allows for that.
It does. It allows them to set up a profile. And so that is something that they put in their own password and they can keep that and then they can update it whenever they apply for a new position.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions that I see. I will move on to the learning. Can you hear me?
I think trustee Cross had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Lee. Go ahead, trustee Cross. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Lee. Go ahead, Trustee Cross.
Yeah, the Juneteenth, how did, who participated in the town hall? How did that go?
It was a, it was a good turnout on that. I couldn't, I mean, we just had people across the board, faculty, staff. Full-time, part-time, any number of people. We opened it up to everyone on the college campus.
Were they all against it?
No, it was very interesting just to hear the feedback that people had. I mean, everyone has a different view on things, but no, no one was against it. But they do have some different ways of looking at things. So it was good. It was good dialogue.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. I'm watching. So wave, wave bigly if you can, so I see everybody. We'll move on to Learning Quality Committee. Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met on October 5th at eight thirty via Zoom. We had two sabbatical reports and then curriculum updates. Susan Brown gave a report on her sabbatical, which was granted during the fall semester of 2019. You can see her report on page four, I believe it is. But the objective was basically to take a look at the history of our athletic program at the college and put that into a digital format. Susan has been with the college since nineteen eighty-one and so she. She had a plethora of information from her own experience as well as spending a lot of time in the archives. And I think the long-term goal is for us to perhaps consider at some point. A kiosk perhaps in the lobby of the gymnasium. Or a place where people can access this when they come to an event. And she's also planning to have it on the website so people can access it through computer, but very, very interesting. She also talked about, you might say, well, what other than the information and the update for the college? She also spent time dealing with our hiking and biking trails in Johnson County. She specifically mentioned the Indian Creek Trail. And is, is working at how to promote those types of activities for our whole community. So not only is this a benefit to the campus with her sabbatical, but also I think will have an impact. To the community of awareness. The second sabbatical was presented by Monica Hogan, English teacher. She was granted a sabbatical also during the fall of 2019 semester. And her project was to develop a free online writing curriculum. That also can be found in detail on page four. And she really was approaching the Common Core state standards. There are twelve specific. Writing standards that she was focusing upon and spent a lot of her effort to. Develop a program for homeschool students as, as well as traditional students, public students, but basically to help. Home, homeschooling parents with writing skills for students that want to go on to college. And I think there's another benefit to that. She has, she talked about the. Alignment she's had with not only the English department on our campus, but other faculty members on our campus. To emphasize writing throughout the curriculum. So both, both very, very interesting sabbaticals. And I, I would, I would ask you to look at those pages in your, in your board book for additional detail. Aaron Prater, Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee, presented several curriculum modifications, which are routine for learning quality. And I would remind the board that these usually come about because of new course alignment. Change in industry standards were applicable. New software applications and routine course updates and edits. And all of those are found on the consent agenda and like I say, are routine. For us to go through, but the learning or the, the Ed Affairs Committee spends a lot of time going through these in detail to get them. With prior approval and that, that concludes my report. Our next learning quality meeting will be November 1.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. Questions for Dr. Cook? I see none, so we'll move on to the management committee report. Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The detail of the management report is found on pages eight to sixteen. In your board packet. Let me go by the agenda and look at the recommendation first before I get to the reports. We do have one recommendation tonight and it has to do with a resolution. And I believe that resolution is found on page eight, nine and 10 in the detail of your board packet. And basically what the resolution is allowing is we, we use, as you can see in your, your board packet. Fees from the Campus Development Fund and the Revenue Bond Debt Service fee, a three dollar per credit. On the Campus Development Fund and five dollar per credit hour of the Bond Debt Service Fund. And as we consider our enrollment being down. And the contemplation of probably not generating. The amount of revenue that we expected, this resolution allows us to go into the general student tuition. That resolution is defined on pages nine and 10. And this, by the way, has been. In consultation with our bond folks and have made this recommendation. So it really positions us that in case we need additional dollars to. Pay for these parity bonds, then we will not. The college will be in a position to pay those bonds if the revenue doesn't, does not come in. So to put it up for discussion, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees adopt the attached resolution. Amending certain provisions of resolutions relating to outstanding revenue bonds of Johnson County Community College, and I'll make that motion.
Moved by, moved by Trustee Cook and seconded by Trustee Snyder. To approve the resolution found on page, page eight of the board packet. Is there a discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any, anybody opposed? Say no.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to abstain. I don't know enough information about this to make a vote on that.
You want to follow up with any questions? And I'll, I'll explain my understanding and see if I get it right, but. We, these bonds are generally paid for by, out of student revenues generated by parking fees. Dining fees, childcare fees. As well as tuition or fees within part of the tuition, the ninety-four dollars a credit hour. With lower enrollment, we get fewer credit hour dollars and people are not, you know, walking through the dining hall. Maybe not bringing their kids to childcare, not buying parking, parking permits or paying parking fees. So. The notion is that with those revenue sources down. This is simply a backstop, as I understand it, to allow other lawfully dedicated funds to be used to pay those. We don't know that we're going to need those now, but this is a backstop. Jerry, is that a fair summary?
That's well stated. And I guess if there are further questions, I think Rachel's on the line. She could, she could explain that in more detail. But I really want to commend the staff for having this foresight, anticipating that we might be, have a shortfall. But as you've indicated, Chairman Musil, it is a backstop in case we need it.
With that, I will reflect the vote as six in favor, one abstention, Trustee Lawson. Next, Dr. Cook.
Thank you. We did receive reports and I would say that the first report we really received was a. Was a combined report by Tom Hall, Rachel Leers. And Janelle Vogler, who. Gave a detailed report of our facilities management projects. And as you know, we've had this in three phases. That report is found on page 12 through 13, I think, or the facilities master plan is actually found on page 14. But with, with Tom coming in, in the middle of the project via Rex Hayes's retirement and picking up the ball. You'll see in the treasures report that each of these projects are under budget. We, we, I don't want to get into the treasures report, but we had, I think, a total of a hundred and two million dollars and. I think all the total funds came in at about ninety-four at this point. Pretty much completed phase one and phase two. We're beginning to work on phase three, but really a, a great report from the three of them regarding. How we have facilitated the master plan from its inception. Ms. Leers also gave information on the proposed budget calendar. We just approved the budget and now we're. Beginning work for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. She'll be making recommendations for approval of the calendar and guidelines at our December management meeting, which will then come to the board in December. Ms. Vogler presented the single-source purchase report. And Tom Hall gave the monthly update on capital infrastructure projects and that, that report is found on page 12 and 13. So I'm just really pleased, Mr. Musil and the rest of the trustees about your commitment to the. Facilities projects, the facilities capital outlay project plan. And, and the great work that our, our staff has done on bringing those ideas to fruition. And with the exception of the motorcycle garage, everything was under budget. We had some costs at the motorcycle garage because there were some things that the city of Overland Park required that we didn't anticipate would be required. But all in all, I just really want to compliment everybody for a job well done on our, our facilities management. Dr. Bound, I'm not sure if you want to add to that or Tom Hall, if you're on, if you want to add to that, but. Just kudos, Mr. Chairman, to our team for great work on our facilities. That concludes, I forgot to mention that the management committee met on. October 7th.
We've had some initial discussions about a kind of a full report to the public as well as the board, but the entire community. Given this was the largest facilities master plan effort in the history of the college. A, a report that will take us back to the year-long study. The adoption of the plan and then the implementation and where it has led to. That will also allow us to, to thank some members of the team, some of whom are no longer at the college. But I think that's appropriate, given that we thought this was going to be a hundred and ten million dollar deal. It's going to come in under that, but. It's a big, it's a big step for the college and sets us up well. So thank you for the report. Any questions for Dr. Cook on the management committee report? If not, we'll move on to the president's recommendations for action. The first one is the treasures report. Treasurer, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The treasures report can obviously be found in the board packet. This is the treasure's report for the month ended August 31st, 2020. Some items of note include on page one, the general post-secondary technical education fund summary. August was the second month of the college's 2020-21 fiscal year. The college's general fund unencumbered cash balance was ninety-two point nine million dollars as of August 31st, 2020. An adwarement tax distribution of five point nine million was received from Johnson County in September. And will be included in next month's report. How expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. And it is, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the college administration that the board of trustees approve. The treasures report for the month ended August 31st, 2020, subject to audit. I so moved.
And moved by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Ingram to accept the treasures report subject to audit. Are there questions or is there discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That motion carries seven zero. The next item is the president's monthly report to the board. Dr. Bound.
Thank you very much, Chair Musil. It is a pleasure again this month to provide you with an update. Going to talk about a number of things relatively briefly, but. Things of importance for you as trustees and for us as a college. First of all, enrollment as we stand today is down fourteen point one percent. Where credit hours actually are down nine percent. When you compare that to where we were at census date when we were down twenty-four percent in headcount. And nineteen percent in credit hours. It's been a dramatic shift. As you may recall. Much of that decline, as we stand today, sixty-two percent of that decline. Is it attributed to our high school students, dual-enrolled students or college now students as we refer to them? And, and those with Quick Start Plus. And so that's the significant contributor. We still think at the end of the semester, if everything goes the way we're seeing. We're likely to be down seven to eight percent, the real optimist. And that's a real optimist to be even more optimistic than I am. Some will say that it could be four or five percent that we're down. We reported earlier today that when you look at the landscape across the country. Kind of the average is more closer to sixteen percent. So we're actually doing. Less poorly than others. We'll put it that way. The good news is we're gaining about two point six percent per week when we look at headcount. And realize, remember that from a budgetary standpoint, it's credit hours that really drives the, the tuition side of the revenue. It's not headcount. Headcount is what drives the service level need, if you will. So enrollment's off. But it's getting better and it's rapidly getting better. The, the deadline for enrolling in college now, Quick Start Plus classes. Is November 9th. So we're going to have a much better sense in the next couple of weeks. So. Secondly, I want to talk about the, the mix of courses that we offer. From time to time, we get questions about, well, why aren't you more face-to-face than where we are today? And I thought maybe a little bit of an explanation to you and to the public in terms of why we are where we are. Today, we're at roughly eighty percent, as we've talked about, eighty percent online and twenty percent face-to-face. When we look at spring semester, we made that decision in August. And continue to stand by that decision. I think it's appreciated generally across the campus. That we at least know what we're going to plan for come January. It's not an arbitrary number. We didn't say, well, we think we ought to be down eighty percent, oh, down eighty. You just have to laugh, just say, Andy, go away. The, the eighty percent online is not an arbitrary number. We looked and, and looked at together with faculty, looked at the curriculum and what are the curricular requirements? For the course offerings, what requires you to be on campus, to be hands-on, right? You, you, you're not going to have. Really good welding skills if you're only doing it virtually. At some point, you've got to pick up a welding gun and you've got to lay a bead. If you are a nurse, at some point, you've got to touch a patient. If you're a dental hygienist, you've got to touch a patient. And you've got to get inside their mouth. I mean, there are just things that, that we know in order for students to master the skills to be. To demonstrate that they've successfully completed the course, it's got to be hands-on. So curriculum really drives that. And then we ask the question from there, with the online courses, what's the best way to do it? Is it strictly an online course that students are meeting thresholds? This is when assignments are due. This is the way you engage in chat functions within the class. That's one way of looking at it. What if the class really needs to come together every Thursday at two o'clock? Versus those online or hybrid classes where you actually need to come to campus once in a while. In order to successfully complete the course. So we're looking at that, again, not so much, not at all from an arbitrary standpoint, but from a curricular standpoint. How do we best serve our students as we move forward? When I look at other community colleges, when I talk to the other presidents here in the state. Certainly there are community colleges that are far more physically present on campus and face-to-face in the classroom than we are. Often those are campuses that have, that are residential campuses. And so the students are already interacting with each other and interacting with faculty and staff on campus. So whether they're in the residence halls or whether they're in the classroom. There's a cross, there's a connection that's happening there all the time. So of course they're going. So they're going to be more face-to-face. be more face to face in in that environment. As you may know, as president, I also have the opportunity to serve on the League for Innovation Board. And last week, we met as a board and the presidents were together in that meeting and and we talked about what are the, what's the course mix look like? So I'm going to give you the two ends of the spectrum. One college is 3% face to face. And they are going to dramatically increase that, almost double it to 5% in the spring. On the other hand, there's a community college that's 50 50 and looking to be 50 50 in the spring. In terms of how they offer it. But when we look at the bulk of the colleges with, that are serving on the board or represented on the board of the League for Innovation, most of them look like we do. Most of the colleges look like we do in terms of, are they a suburban, metropolitan, serving, community college, larger community colleges versus smaller community colleges in rural settings? We're much more similar to who we are as a college. And those colleges look very much like we do. 10 to 30% face to face is kind of the range that they're in. So if you're getting questions about what does JCCC look like from a course delivery standpoint? I thought it might be helpful for you to know, what are the other, the best community colleges in the country that look like us? How are they going about delivering education? So a little bit about course offerings. I want to draw your attention to one of the favorite things that happens at JCCC each year, and that's our bake sale. And so I say that with all seriousness. The door used to, I mean, the line used to go out the door of people waiting to go and get their baked goods. You can still do that. You go to the website and and if you do the search for the bake sale, it'll pop up and you can order online, have to do it on by Tuesday for what's available and then you pick it up on Thursday afternoon. And so it's still available. The food is delicious. For those in the listening audience that have to eat gluten free, they even do that really well. I will personally attest to that. And so it's a, it's a such a tremendous opportunity. If this is how the students get to interact, not only with the, with their baking skills, but also interact with the customer, the running product, you know, the the baked goods from inside the building to right out to the car and interact with them, which I, as a president, thoroughly enjoy any chance I get to engage with students. Switching the gears again, I want to talk about keeping our students and keeping our colleagues as safe as we can on campus and build on some of the comments that Dick Carter made earlier around the support in this time of global pandemic related to K CARES Act funding and related to funds distributed through Kabor and through Johnson County. All total, we've received about 6.4, 6.5 million dollars worth of support for institution needs as well as for student needs. And so in the CARES Act funding, just short of 5.1 million, we've talked about that before, about 1.7 million of that remains. They, we've awarded 2.4 million in student emergency grants, so meeting the needs of students. That's critically important for them to be successful. Just under $100,000 in that on the student side available. On the institutional side, though, we still have dollars available. And if we don't spend those on the institutional needs, those we can move over to meet the needs of students. In addition to that, from the CRF funding from Kabor, again, those funds, as we referenced, really have to be spent by the end of this calendar year. We were awarded just over a million dollars. That's all accounted for generally at this point, things like PPE, campus safety and security needs, a healthy athlete tracking data plans for hotspots and so forth, many, many other things, things related to Accuplacer and Alex testing for students to come in and be a part of the college, be a student here. In addition, the the county funds, we've been awarded about $354,000, roughly rounded that. And again, those dollars have to be spent by the end of the year. The county continues to be a great partner with us. They've been clear, we're not going to reimburse the college. We're not going to fund things that you already had in your budget. We're looking for new COVID related expenses. And the team has done a fantastic job across the college in identifying those needs. So I think we're doing a good job of partnering from a federal, state and local level in meeting the needs of our students. The last area related to COVID and the impact of of the virus on the residents of Johnson County goes to short term training opportunities. About three and three quarter million, 3.75 million dollars was awarded to support workforce training, of which our continuing ad team has done a fantastic job of of engaging that. Got about 350 different short term training options, one that we talk about a lot, a CDL because of the the truck driver shortage that we have in this area and the needs that we have as a a community to respond. But there are Karen, I think roughly 350 different short term training options. You got to get going now in order to complete in that timeline December 30. We've already had 150 people, more roughly 150 people say, I want to do it. And so the good news is we're meeting very, very real needs here. And then to build on that, from a small business development standpoint, soon there'll be grants available. I think they're about maximum $10,000 grants. Alyssa, Karen, do I have, I see heads nodding. I can read what's in front of me pretty well. So anyways, a great, great resources. They say it takes a village. Yeah, it absolutely takes. It takes a great region to come together to meet the needs of individuals, employers and 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 businesses as an entity. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bound. Very, very detailed. Questions for Dr. Bound on those topics? Trustee Smith Everett?
Two really quick. The first one is really a comment. I am appalled, appalled, I tell you, that the bake sale being open has not been mentioned in every single committee. I don't know how I missed it, but it should be the top of every email. It should be the top of every committee. That bake sale, I thought, would just vanish with COVID. So thank you, Dr. Bound, but we have some internal communication to work on. That bake sale is top of.
I don't know how you missed it, trustee Smith. It's been great.
Oh, stop. Okay. Second question is, I'm going to ask, as I've asked each month about our college now, how are we doing anything different to reach those students, those counselors in the high school? Are we doing anything to close that gap? Because we really only have two weeks and it's still in double digits in terms of enrollment.
And I'll open this up for for Dr. McLeod, if you'd like to chime in on this. I have reached out to each of the superintendents to make sure that they understand what it is that we're trying to do, the extension that we've given them. We added time to the end of the, extended the due date so that students have a chance to register. I know that in the math areas, they're actively engaging. Actually, our math faculty are out proctoring the tests so that students can be placed properly into the math class that they need to be in. But I know, Dr. McLeod, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Yeah, we've done extensive work in trying to connect not just with counselors, but with our liaison instructors who are located in every school that we serve. We have put out more than our normal number of meetings via Zoom to kind of work with those folks to make sure that the students are prized. We've sent messages through the superintendent's offices to parents as well as been working through the instructors for, to try and make sure that interested students have an opportunity. Some of this, I think, is is related to a little bit of fear of the stressful situation that students are in right now as well. And then creating a long term college transcript that may not be their best work because of their inability to to organize as well as a little bit of the confusion that the districts have had as we've moved from remote to hybrid. And some folks back to remote. And so we've, we've had a lot of challenges, but there has been a great deal of work and Dean Maupin and her folks in the College Now office have been absolutely stellar at staying in communication with all of our superintendents and our cooperating teachers, literally down to working on MOUs to make sure that we can get into the building and, you know, promise that we will take appropriate health precautions to get ourselves in a position to actually test our students to try and get them in offering multiple chances at placement testing onsite at the various high schools. So there's been a great deal of work that has gone into this and we have been shrinking that number. The last few weeks have seen us enroll over 600 students who are interested in the College Now opportunity. And we continue that work apace right up until the deadline.
Thank you. I assumed much of that, but to hear it, I really appreciate hearing the level of detail and the, you know, the tremendous work our staff is doing in such strange unprecedented times. So thank you very much. That concludes my questions.
Any other questions? Dr. McLeod, Dr. Bound, I appreciate that too, Laura. I was going to ask a question. I mean, one of the barriers, and I think you, Mickey, you walked through a lot of, and I really hadn't thought about the fact that I don't want to take a C in a college transcript class when I'm uncertain about how I'm learning or how people are teaching in this environment. So that, that was a new one, but a very, very real. So thanks. Thanks for the efforts. We'll look forward to the November meeting. I guess we'll have kind of the final, final enrollment. We'll find where we are. I noticed in our clips today, there was an article that demonstrates we are not alone and we're a little bit better than others, although it's, it, you know, those macro numbers, we don't know if those colleges rely a lot on College Now for their enrollment numbers or not. It makes it a little hard to compare apples to apples.
Certainly here in in Kansas, we are quite unique compared to most of our colleagues. We have, you know, 22% of our students ish are College Now students. So it's, it's has a significant impact, as you can see, on enrollment.
And that will be another victim of COVID-19 because all those students who didn't get three to six hours when they otherwise would have will now have to get them someplace else and perhaps and spend more money on it, spend more time. Trustee Ingram?
Yeah. One of, one of the other things that I've really thought a lot about and and I'd be interested in Dr. McLeod's response to this too, is, you know, the fact that all of these kids ended their semester in the spring, high school students in March. You know, they just, they didn't have the opportunity to hear from their own instructors. You know, you really should do this. You should consider this opportunity. They didn't get that encouragement from the individual instructors. They didn't get it from their counselors. And I think that's, that's something that we kind of forget about too. You know, they lost a quarter and it was an important quarter for planning their future. So I just throw that out. You can say, yes, that's, that's a factor. But, but the minute I thought about that, I thought, I just don't hear anybody talking about that. And we're, we're moving on. I get it. But I think that's an important point about this too. So thank you.
It's a really important piece of this. And and even more than that, opportunities that we usually take to engage those students. I mean, I personally have been invited by instructors in multiple school districts to come out and talk to students about the opportunities at Johnson County and about their future planning. And all of those opportunities, I usually take about four days a semester out of the office to go and I spend all day as they rotate students through the auditorium to ask me questions and talk to me. And and all of those sorts of opportunities were canceled as well and and all of our recruitment fairs, to which we normally will send our folks from student development and Randy's folks in admissions and recruiting, didn't get a chance to participate. And at the front end of this, you know, people were not nearly as comfortable as they are seven months later with the virtual environment. And so trying to just summarily move those recruiting events into virtual events was not nearly as successful in terms of attendance either.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just have felt very strongly about that. And I think it's a reason. It's not an excuse. It's a reason. So thank you.
Trustee Cross, I saw your hand move. I'm not sure why.
Well, I just like hearing myself talk. I thank Dr. Bound and Dr. McLeod for the reports and trustee Smith Everett for the question. I think, and I board Chair Musil in some private phone calls with the notion that the, you know, our students, all of us with kids and our students at the college, like they've essentially sacrificed their experience in the classroom and frankly, what they paid for. I mean, as a business owner myself, I mean, you want to get what you pay for. And I was a social learner, as a fraternity guy and then a slack off for much of my academic career. So I needed the social component. And I think we really shouldn't lose that. And I think the sacrifice that goes into social and medical mitigation needs to be recognized. And I think we have. I just wanted to voice my comment and concern about it. I stand by Dr. Bound's decision to be as online as we are. I would frankly rather have us closer to that 3%. But I, I understand and respect that there's a lot of hands on learning in the technical courses and science classes. And so nevertheless, I think as soon as we can, in the next year or three, whenever this pandemic ends, that, that, you know, we have some recognition for the, these classes, like all the kids that missed graduation or sports over the last year. UMKC today, one of my monitors announces that they're suspending athletic programs because they just don't have the revenue to support it. So anyway, I'll be quiet, Mr. Chair. I thank you for the opportunity. But I think recognizing the sacrifice made by our students, somebody needs to put language to it. Greg Musil could probably say it better than me, but I thought I'd jump to that.
You said it quite well. And there will be opportunities to do that and hopefully sooner rather than later. Okay, Dr. Bound, do you want to conclude?
Just, yeah, one, one last comment. The reality is the, the learning environment is shifting. And one of the conversations we had with, with the league presidents is, is we need to wrap our arms around now, soon, about what is the future of higher education look like? What is the future of the community college look like moving forward and and to plan and to be very intentional about that as we move forward? In the current reality that we're in, we owe much gratitude to our faculty and to our staff who have morphed and have adapted their teaching methodologies into an online virtual space and have done so incredibly well. And I am so appreciative to, appreciative to our faculty and to our staff who have done that well and continue to adapt and and get even better each and every day in how they deliver education and deliver service to our students. And so I want to say thank you to them.
Thank you. I, I would extend that to seeing Karen and Alyssa on here are the continuing ad component, the Small Business Development Center, finding ways to help people, the training opportunities that we've been advertising are incredible. So we're all doing our best. We'll move on to new business. I will announce that the audit committee will meet on November 5. Trustees, you will be getting the packet for that, but that's our quarterly meeting. The other item of new business is the appointment of a nominating committee. As our practice has been in our committee policy, 111.03, we, the chair has the ability to appoint a nominating committee. the, the chair has the ability to appoint a nominating committee with the approval of the board. Traditionally, I think it's been done at the November meeting or announced. And then we vote on the nominations in December. Our November meeting is, I think, the 19th. Our December meeting is the second Thursday in order to, to beat the end of the semester. So there wasn't much time in between and we have Thanksgiving holiday. So in order to allow the, the members of the committee time to communicate with all trustees, I decided I would appoint it at the October meeting. And, and my recommendation to you is to appoint Vice Chair Snyder and Treasurer Cross as the nominating committee for officers liaison and committee appointments for calendar year 2021. The policy says with the approval of the board, I don't know that we've ever had a formal vote. So I'm fine with the consensus unless somebody wants to put it to a vote. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay. Well, we'll just assume that that'll be the appointments and they will be in touch with each trustee about positions for 2021.
Are we doing a vote, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry?
I said, are we just still, you said, we're doing a vote?
Well, we've, we've always done it by consensus. We can certainly do it by a vote. The policy says with the approval of the board, I would take consensus as approval. But if, if you believe there's a, a need for a vote, we can certainly have a motion and second and do that.
Okay, yeah, I definitely believe a, a vote is in order.
Is there a motion to approve trustee Snyder and trustee Cross as the ad hoc nominating committee under policy 111.03?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I heard trustee Snyder first, trustee Cook, would you like to second it?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Moved by trustee Snyder and seconded by trustee Cook. Is there any discussion? Trustee Lawson?
Yeah, none of us were provided with the metric by which anyone was chosen for this position. And no period was given for anyone to be nominated or to seek the position. So I will be voting no.
I might, if, if there's a serious concern about that, I picked two of the senior members of the board, two who've been trusted by their fellow trustees as officers, and two people who, as we all, I think, understand represent certain differing views and diverse views on the board. And I believe they will do a good job. So if there's a concern about that and not having reasons for it, those are my reasons. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. How about raise your right hand and I'll report who that is. Like, cause it says you have to unmute. I've got six all opposed. Trustee Lawson, so that will move, that will pass six to one with trustee Lawson voting no. The next item, there's no old business. The next item is consent agenda. The consent agenda is a collection of items that are traditionally non-controversial, have been reviewed by committee and recommended by staff. They're traditionally handled in one motion and voted on collectively. Any member of the board has the right to pull any item off the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any board member wishes to pull and have considered separately? If not, I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move the approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, and I see it as seconded by trustee Cross, moved by trustee Cook, seconded by trustee Cross to approve the consent agenda as published. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion passes 7-0. We do have executive sessions, as I've mentioned. Before we get to that, I want to acknowledge the crush the vote effort. Tara Karim and that committee has been holding debate watches and follow-up conversations. I believe have one scheduled for tonight for the final debate, the presidential election. They've been hosting along with the PLAC committee, the, some town halls with candidates for various offices. And I think everybody on this call would agree, everybody should vote, get out and vote. It's too late to register, hopefully you're registered, but, but vote between now and November 3rd or now at 7:00 PM on November 3rd.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
How many times can we vote?
I'll be your lawyer and tell you, you should only vote once.
I went to law school in Missouri, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Lee. All right, we've, we have a couple of executive sessions. I, I'm going to time the start of those so that we each have the opportunity, not only to leave the main Zoom and join the, the private confidential Zoom, but also so we have time to take a short break since we've been on this for about an hour and a half. But for the first executive session, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiation, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for 30 minutes and begin at 6:45 PM and end at 7:15 PM, at which time, open session will resume in the main meeting Zoom video conference. We would like to invite Dr. Andy Bound, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Dr. Randy Weber, Becky Seltiver and Kelsey Nazar to this executive session. Do I have such a motion?
So move?
Moved by trustee Snyder, seconded by trustee Ingram. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously. Did everybody receive the Zoom link, everybody on the trustees? So we can join it. Okay, we've got about eight minutes. So we'll take a short break and members of the, that were invited, the members of the board and those invited will attend by the other Zoom. We will come back to the main Zoom in between executive sessions. So if you're watching online, you can stay on the main Zoom. And as soon as we come back, the, the video will go live. We will recess now into executive session. I have 7:15 on my computer screen. We have returned from the executive session that was scheduled to end at 7:15. No action was taken during that session. We now have a second executive session. And I have misplaced the motion. Here it is. I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel on a pending administrative personnel claim, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during the session. The executive session will last for 30 minutes and begin at 7:20 PM and end at 8:10 PM, at which time, open session will resume in the main meeting, main, main meeting Zoom video conference. We'd like to invite, in addition to the trustees, Dr. Andy Bound, Becky Seltiver and Kelsey Nazar to join this executive session. Is there such a motion?
So move.
Greg, I think you meant to say that it would end at 7:50, not, not 8:10?
I'm sorry, 7:20, end at 7:50. My College Now math would not get me a good grade. With that correction, it's been moved by trustee Ingram. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cross. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye or raising your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously. Once again, the board will recess into executive session at the confidential Zoom address. And we will return to this main Zoom video conference at approximately, at no later than 7:50 PM. Thank you. Okay, we have all seven trustees back from the executive session. No action was taken during the executive session. The only item left on the agenda is a motion to adjourn. Would somebody like to make that motion? Trustee Ingram moves. Somebody like to second? Trustee Cross, seconded the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.